I could add, because I think it's important to note, you know, as you know, there's a balancing act all through the design phase. So what we've done is we've had several meetings with fire, police, public works, planning and zoning, the Board of Ed, of course, you know, pretty much everybody that would have any say or want to touch this project, because we've been trying to say, okay, what's the best for everybody to work with, and including the utility companies, the water, the UI, and so on and so forth. So we are at a point where we've had a tremendous consensus with all the town departments within this building, if you will.
And with that said, you raise an interesting point, too. We've five years of public outreach, too. It's because of public, isn't it a fair characterization, because of public input, that the facade of Stratford High is going to be saved or enhanced, so it retains some of the historic charm, as well as becoming a 21st century facility?
That's exactly accurate, yes.
Thank you.
Good. I just have one question, because I think it's going to come up later, just for the record, and I think it's going to be directed to your traffic analysis. What was the student enrollment increase and the staff increase that was built into the traffic study that was presented to come up with the analysis?
I can answer that globally, then you can maybe get more specific. So what the state of Connecticut requires to design a school project is a demographic study with an eight-year look ahead, and that was done professionally, hired by the Board of Education, and we're designing a school for 1,100 students. Today, I believe, there's about 980?
I can give you the exact numbers. So the information that I received for the 2015-2016 school year had an enrollment of 1,044 students, and the enrollment projections that I received assumed a 2020 to 2021 school year enrollment of 1,089 students.
And that's a percentage of?
That is approximately a 4.3% increase over that period of time. In terms of staff, I was notified that there would be no changes in the overall levels of staff. So currently, there are 150 staff members that are employed at the high school, and that would be essentially kept. Well, actually, I'm sorry. It was agreed to assume that the staffing will increase at the same rate as the student enrollment to accommodate that. So it would be the same 4.3% increase over that period of time.
Is it your understanding that 4.3% would be the maximum increase, or could it go higher in that eight-year look forward? I know you're restricted by footage and square footage and capacity, so.
The school is designed for 1,100, so if you start going beyond that, there is some elbow room in the size of the classrooms. The classroom is now designed to be 800 to 850 square feet, so there is some room for that to grow a little bit if it needs to, but the maximum that we've designed to is 1,100 students.
4.3%?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to get that clear.
Manager, I have a question. 4.3% increase, you said 2020 to 21?
Yes.
Okay. What is that based on? What is that number based on? Where do you get that number from? I'm just curious.
That was the number I received from the school in terms of their projections over that seven or eight-year period, and assuming that the year, the analysis year is the year that the project would be complete, which would be around 2020, I believe it was 2020 or 2021, I'm just speaking here right now, I have it in the report, but.
Do you have the report? Do I have the report? Was I given the report? I'm just wondering.
I'm assuming that one report was given.
Based on speaking to Jay, we provided, I believe, two copies of the full report, and then I want to say 20 copies, required copies of an abbreviated report, which has some of the information. And so, yes, the report was provided.
And the capacity you say is 1,100?
Correct, yes.
So safe to assume we are expecting an influx in students, student enrollment in Stratford? Is that what that's based on?
Usually they take existing schools. They usually take the existing schools that are out there and the population in the feeder schools, and then how they go to Flood and Worcester, and then they bring them forward and take out the approximation for private schools and the magnet schools. That's what they've done in the past.
Mr. Llewellyn, please.
Before I give my other speech, which will come up later, with regards to the population...
Mr. Llewellyn, why don't you introduce yourself and your title?
Okay. Alan Llewellyn, 949 Huntington Road. I'm the current chairman of the Stratford High School Renovation Subcommittee. The population study to which these gentlemen use as part of the design, I believe it projected out to 2022, 2023, and what it shows is that there is sort of like these current four-year, 2.9 on average cycles, where the populations grow and shrink at both high schools. The 4.3% was the maximum increase number over the largest population increase for four years. So at that point, once you hit that peak, it then starts going down again. And so the 1,100 is the anticipated peak enrollment for Stratford High School that we've designed to.
And is that also the capacity of what Stratford High, I guess the new Stratford High School would be able to accommodate as 1,100 students?
Exactly, and off the top of my head, the highest number that I saw it hit was, I think, 1079 or 1083.
Okay, so we're talking possibly 17 students under?
Exactly.
And with the possible addition of over 500 residential units going into that district?
Right, and the sort of, the way that got figured in is, we weren't figuring that the impact to the schools was going to be Avalon-esque, so to speak. We were more, you know, seeing things as more, you know, one and two-bedroom apartments, but I think we did factor in for some expansion and some growth in the two and three-bedroom rental units, which obviously those would have families.
Here's one of the things, we're getting a little far off track. This study wasn't about questioning what the Board of Ed's projection was. They're required to build to the capacity that the school is now. If the population, the student population grows exceedingly more, the Board of Ed is just going to have to come back and take a look at it. But the design of the building was actually based on requirements from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I am going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak in favor of this application.
Hi, good evening. I'm back again. Alan Llewellyn, 949 Huntington Road, current Ninth District Town Council person, multi-term member on the Building Needs Committee, and as I stated previously, I'm the current chair of the Stratford High School Renovation Subcommittee, working very closely with our program manager, Crack, and Rich Snedeker is here on their behalf tonight, as well as the design team. As Mr. Fuller mentioned earlier, there was an original 2011 bond issuance that was done up in Hartford. Obviously, the work on that bond and the actual groundwork for that started as far back as 2009, 2010. From that point, there was very little movement on the project, and the Stratford High School renovation was largely seen as a laid-out on the horizon, and that we would get to it when we get to it. In those intervening five years, the town did construct a new elementary school, so there were other projects, other work going on, other things that got focused on. One of the key turning points for the project was in the spring of 2014, when an idea was put forth to build a new high school in Longbrook Park. I believe that neighborhood, the entire town, myself and Mr. Fuller were on the zoning commission at that time. We knew we weren't going to be in favor of rezoning, you know, town parkland to become a high school, and that led us back to seeing what the options were and what we could do with the existing Stratford High School property. Those P's with these microphones. So one of the things that we kind of discovered was that we felt like, really, the property is big, but it was very kind of, everything was very densely centered around North Parade and around King Street. And as we started exploring building out into King Street, we discovered that there were certain drainage measures that were put underground over there that were never reflected on any of the FEMA flood maps. So by going through the process of updating the flood map, we then made the site across the street on King Street buildable. That opened up our access out to California Street, and that's why we feel we can now kind of have a little bit more of a spread-out, you know, campus-like feel to it versus everything being borne by North Parade and King Street. So again, with that high school being the only option, sort of a new committee was formed, a very broad coalition was formed. It extended all the way up to Hartford with our state representatives, the late Terry Backer, and then taking up for, you know, his torch has been Joe Gresko. Additionally, Stephanie Phillips, who's now your new chair, Len Petraselli, Joel Paul, many of the other well-known, you know, Democrats in town, along with State Rep. Laura Hoydeck, State Senator Kevin Kelly, also State Representative Ben McGordy, Matt Catalano, Jason Sanney, the administration. There's a very, very bipartisan, broad beast across town support for this project. The administration, the superintendent's office over at 1,000 Broadway, all of the current Board of Education members in all eight, it would have been all 10 as well, had we still had 10, current town council members are all on board, all in support of this project. The only other thing I want to add is with regards to parking, I feel like the parking numbers that were brought up by our consultants and the fact that our traffic study was done at peak times of 6:30 to 8:30, and then 1:30 to 3:30, it adds a lot of strength to what we've done in terms of parking and how we have the entrances and exits layout for this building. When we presented to Planning Commission, one of their critical issues for us, and their critical questions for us as a project, were parking-related, and we did actually stray two meetings with the Planning Commission, because we needed to make sure that we got their parking questions and concerns addressed. So, you know, as a current councilman and a former zoning commissioner, I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all, you know, for your time. As, you know, I also donate my time as well. I know that with the zoning commission seats comes a lot of responsibility, a lot of stress, and a lot of anxiety. So I thank you for your time this evening, and if you have any, you know, further questions, you know, myself and the rest of the team are here to get you whatever information you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the compliment. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Mr. Rancunas, yes. We would be remiss without having you.
This has been Walter P. Runcunas, 425 Second Avenue. This has been a pet project. One of these days, we're going to get this thing fixed, or else I might get shot altogether. I have a pet project. I've been doing it.
Go away a little bit, yeah.
I've been doing this for a long time. I have five children, have gone through that school. I was very active with each and every one of them in various phases of development while the school, and it was getting bad at that time. After hollering, bleeding, and whatever, I finally got something from the council, that we're finally going to do something over there. I give these people behind me, Alan and all the others that he's worked with, credit, bravo, whatever you want to call it, to finally getting something done for these children south of the Mason-Dixon line. Barnum Avenue, as any of you know, is classified as the Mason-Dixon line in my category. It's south of here in Stratford, north of Barnum Avenue is the magic words, Vanelle High School. This is a project that has been gone for a long, long time. There should be no question in your minds that, having sat through each and every presentation, the people were good enough to give me paperwork. I've attended some of the meetings, but some of them are difficult for me, but their plans... It hates me. But the plans for this school are par-excellent, you know. You people have the right to do things correctly, and what it is, is a yes vote and okay, to finally, after all this haggling, going before all the boards and everything, to say, let's not fool around, let's put a shovel in the ground and get it done. I would like to see this done before my time is up. My time is running out, people. It's getting close, but I want to see this project, one of many that I follow through on, get it done.
Walter.
I'm going to.
Could we say that we have your approval to go forward with this project?
You have my...
Thank you very much.
I won't hold you off anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor?
Ron Ticky, 96 Homestead Ave. I just want to give my support to this project. It's been well thought out. I think it will improve the area as far as traffic goes, from what I see every morning. My father had graduated from that school. It was kind of upsetting to me. My son, my youngest son graduated this June from Stratford High School. My father and I started wandering the halls, reminiscing about his days of glory, and his comment to me was, besides the fresh paint and the wax, it's exactly as I left it. It's time now. Our kids deserve to be an upgraded environment for their learning. It's dingy in there. It's dew. It's time for Stratford High to shine, and I feel these gentlemen did a great job incorporating the older community's concern with the front facade. My father, he was very happy when he heard that aspect of it. You're not getting rid of history. It's being incorporated into the new building, and it's ready. We owe it to our kids to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition? Please. Mr. Not, do you need the poster boards that are up?
I don't. I'd rather lay the second down.
Thank you. Is it possible that we can take down the poster boards so that we can see through them? Thank you. Do you have one to stamp? Mr. Posner, do you have one to stamp?
No, I don't have one to stamp. Sorry. Good evening, ladies. Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Rosatsky. My name is Barry Not. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Not, Not &amp; Done with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of Reef LLC of 101 Downs Avenue, Stanford, Connecticut. My client owns real estate abutting this project located at 311 King Street and 341 King Street, and has a 35-year ground lease on property at 1189 Barnum Avenue. It's the car wash property on Barnum Avenue and King Street. And if you look at Exhibit 1, Exhibit 1 is the assessor's map, where I've highlighted in yellow the Stratford High School site, and I've highlighted in pink the property controlled by my client, which is immediately adjacent next door to this property. Now, George Purim and Alan had indicated that this project has been underdesigned for five years. There have been numerous meetings with the public. There have been all kinds of committee meetings. There's been meetings with the state. The state reps have gotten involved, and there's been subcommittee meetings. The only people that they did not meet with were the people that owned the abutting property, of which my client was one. Now, this car wash that my client owns was approved by the zoning commission in 2001, and there's also an oil change facility located on the same site, which was approved in 2004. A condition of that car wash and oil change facility approval by the zoning commission was that all egress from the site be onto King Street and not onto Barnum Avenue where the car wash fronts. Accordingly, the construction activity related to this new high school facility, with its 128,000-square-foot building, parking lot site improvements, and associated pedestrian bridge across King Street located on the west side of the street, immediately adjacent to my client's business, as well as the new 112,000-square-foot facility, which will be constructed on the east side of King Street, will have a devastatingly negative impact on my client's business during the period of construction, which will most probably continue after construction is completed due to the complex associated with the pedestrian bridge. Secondly, it was not until corporate counsel for my client reached out to the school construction project manager in response to the abutter letter that was sent to my client prior to the Board of Zoning Appeals public hearing, that anyone from the town had any discussions with my client whatsoever about incorporating its property into the proposed site plan. That discussion between my client, its corporate lawyer, the town and Board of Education representatives, as well as the project manager, did not take place for the first time until June 30th, 2016, five days before the Board of Zoning Appeals public hearing. They didn't reach out to the abutters until June 30th, 2016. Certainly, the lots owned by my clients at 311 and 341 King Street, which constitute an additional 24,829 square feet, or 0.57 acres of land, could have helped to reduce the number and size of variances requested by the town for this project. If only some communication had occurred between the town, the Board of Education representatives, and my client, while the plans for the new high school were being developed, especially given all of the delays, change orders, price increases that occurred over the five years that this project was being proposed. At the Board of Zoning Appeals public hearing on July 5th, the town presented its request for certain variances which were needed in order to construct this project. The town requested five, excuse me, six substantial variances, a front yard setback variance of Section 4.2 of the zoning regulations from 20 feet to zero feet, a maximum building coverage variance of Section 4.2 of the zoning regulations from 25% to 36.2%, a maximum building height variance of Section 4.2 of the zoning regulations from 30 feet to 62.6, 62 feet, 6 inches, which, by the way, will make Stratford High School the tallest building in the town of Stratford, and higher than the largest building that is allowed under any of our zoning regulations, 62 feet, 6 inches. The zone requires a height of 30 feet. We're more than doubling the height with this variance request. Also, a parking variance is required by Section 12.5 of the zoning regulations from 300 cars to 273 cars, a variance of Section 12.11 of the zoning regulations in order to construct parking facilities within 50 feet of residential property, a variance of Section 3.14 of the zoning regulations in order to engage in construction activity within 50 feet of an inland wetland. In order for you to understand the size, scope, and scale of what is being proposed here, I draw your attention to the North Town Center Shopping Center, where the Big Y is on Holly Lane. That project is 118,000 square feet in three buildings, two-story buildings. Maximum height is 35 feet. That's 118,000 square feet on 15 acres. This is 240,000 square feet on nine acres, with two buildings, one of which is 62 feet high, and with a pedestrian bridge across a heavily traveled town road. This represents a proposal which is more than double in size to the Big Y complex on a site which is only 60% as large. This is a massive building on a relatively small piece of property. Now, you all know that I appear before this commission regularly, and I've been doing it for 42 years. If I had been contacted by a private developer seeking to construct a facility of this magnitude, needing as many variances as this one did, on such a small parcel of land, I would have advised that developer that such a proposal would be denied, and that I would not jeopardize my credibility before this commission by representing such a developer, making a presentation for a building that is so out of character with our zoning regulations and is way too large for the site upon which it is being proposed. Nevertheless, the requested variances, which represent substantial deviations from the zoning regulations, none of which the applicant is entitled to, by the way, there's no hardship here, and that's not your problem, but just so you know, there's no hardship. They were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals on July 5th. Obviously, we have a situation where any hardship plain by the town was self-created by virtue of the fact that the town, the Board of Education, had chosen to build a facility which they admitted in their submitted documents is too large for the site upon which they seek to build it. As a result of these illegally approved variances, my client filed an appeal of the BZA decision to the Superior Court, a copy of which is Exhibit 2 in your folder. Now, Exhibit 3 is a copy of Section 20.2.1 of the zoning regulations. This section sets forth special case criteria and objectives, which should be examined by the commission during its deliberation on a special case application, which is what you're doing tonight. This is a special case application to build a school in a residential zone. They didn't say that, but that's what it is. Subsection A of this regulation requires that the proposed use shall be in conformance to all requirements of the district in which it is located. That is clearly not the case here, where the town needed to apply for six substantial variances in order to shoehorn the proposed building onto this site. For example, on the second page of its project summary, the applicant states, "Due to the nature of the proposed school program and project requirements, several variances are requested, which are described in detail below." All the variances requested below are related to the logistics of keeping Stratford High School in the same location it has occupied for the last 92 years and the undersized available lot. They admit in their own document that the lot upon which they are proposing to keep the school is undersized. In other words, the town is admitting by these statements that the nature of the project requirements and the desire to keep Stratford High School in its current location was driving the need for the requested variances rather than some element of site specifics, even though the site is too small to accommodate their proposed use. Subsection B of Section 20.2.1 requires that the location, size, and intensity of such use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. neighborhood development. That condition clearly does not exist with respect to this application. By its own admission, on the third page of its project summary, the applicant states, "The parcel size is smaller than desired for the overall school program and associated requirements," end quote. Here, rather than modifying the proposed building and site plan to fit the site, the applicant is admitting that the site is too small for the project and therefore they had to seek these requested variances. Section, subsection D of the same regulation requires that, quote, "The design, location and specific details of the proposed use shall not adversely affect safety in the street, nor increase traffic congestion in the area, nor interfere with the pattern of highway circulation. Information on past, present roadway conditions, existing roadway capacity, traffic accidents, existing and proposed traffic volumes, existing and projected volume, capacity ratio, existing and projected levels of service and adequacy of traffic signalization and channelization shall be required for all projects impacting traffic conditions," end quote. Here, the applicant is requesting approval of a 273-car parking lot as opposed to the 300-car parking lot that's required by the zoning regulations, in which they admit that an additional 80 cars, which the kids are now parking all over the neighborhood out in the street, are going to be relocated from north of Nichols Avenue, which apparently is where they park now, onto this parking lot, which is too small for the 1,000 students and 150 teachers that are going to be on this property. On page 6 of the project summary, the town states that the population of the schools, this is a quote, "The population of the schools determined by a demographic, demographic study that is required by the state. Once the student population is determined, the gymnasium is sized, so the best is practical to meet the requirement for the total number of students plus faculty. The site is smaller than required for the proposed program and associated parking requirements." Once again, they admit in their own submittal documents that this site is too small for this building. It's really ridiculous. Now, in other words, "The town and the Board of Education have designed a project to meet certain educational criteria and desires without regard to the physical constraints of the parcel size and the location upon which it proposes to construct this facility." Now, a traffic engineer a minute ago talked about the 80 parking spaces that the kids are now parking offsite coming onto the location, okay? It's going to be from 40 to 120 children parking in this parking lot. The school buses are now going to drop off and pick up on King Street, as they do now on North Parade. You've got a 13-second light facing the cars heading north on King Street to cross Barnum Avenue. Now, I go up King Street crossing Barnum Avenue once a day anyway and have for the last 50 years. It usually takes me two or three red lights to get across King Street, to get across Barnum Avenue with the traffic conditions the way they are right now, because you've only got a 13-second time there to go, to go green. Now, the traffic engineer's excuse is, well, 13 seconds is the maximum that the DOT allows. That is not justification to approve a plan which will significantly cause further delays crossing Barnum Avenue, because now in addition to the traffic that you've got tomorrow at 3:30 in the afternoon, where you're going to wait two, three, four times to get across Barnum Avenue, now you're going to have school buses and an additional 80 cars coming out of the Stratford High School parking lot onto King Street in that immediate location, where my client's customers are required by the zoning commission of the town of Stratford for the last 15 years to have their egress and ingress into the site on King Street exactly where they're going to build this pedestrian bridge. I mean, the whole thing is absurd. And all they had to do was contact my client five years ago to start negotiations about acquiring his property and incorporating it into the site. They wouldn't need all the variances that they've requested and I wouldn't be standing here tonight, but that wasn't done. Now, notwithstanding the good intentions of the town and the Board of Education and the fact that this whole project was done in good faith for the right reasons, it does not excuse the applicant from having to satisfy the specific special case approval contained in section 20.2.1 of your zoning regulations. And they never should have designed a project that requires variances, because I'm going to have this variance, those variance approval in court for the next 18 months and then probably by certification to the appellate court for another 18 months after that. It's ridiculous. This application should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other persons who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody else? Hearing that there isn't, may I have a motion to...
Be open to the commission to ask questions.
Oh, sorry.
Well, actually, I had just, Turner Knott. Two points of clarification. First, did you say, did you say shoehorn into a residential neighborhood area?
Yes.
Okay.
This whole site is RS4.
Okay, so he said shoehorn, right?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. 240,000 square feet on nine acres is shoehorning.
Okay. Also, want a clarification. Did you, did you also say increased traffic?
Yes.
Okay, so increased traffic in a residential neighborhood?
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about school buses and 80 additional cars coming out of the Stratford High School parking, parking lot on, onto King Street. I'm not talking about cars from eight single-family houses coming onto a residential.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Fuller?
Point of clarification, it's, usually the applicant gets right to refute any testimony that was stated into record.
Thank you. Is the applicant, Mr. Per, would you like to refute any information that you have heard this evening? Thank you.
Once again, George Kramer, Antonasi Associates. There's a, I commend Mr. Knott of all of his facts, although I must say they are somewhat slated. And the reason I say that is he emphasizes on some of the negatives that are existing. And one of the negatives that he emphasized on was the 60-foot height. The only thing that is 60-foot height is about an 1,100-square-foot penthouse in the middle of the academic building across the street. So, some of the variances that we're asking for are existing. They exist today. In other words, the existing wall that separates the auto body from King Street, that is inside the setback line, that's there today. We're not changing that. Granted, there are other variances that we're asking from a setback point of view, but some of them are existing. The other thing is, he keeps on talking about all this being added onto King Street. That's not true at all. We have exit onto North Parade, exit and entrance onto North Parade, exit and entrance onto King Street, and exit and entrance onto California, although after hours we'll be restricting the California exit and entrance. The, the, the constant about the shoehorning, as you picked up on, and the equation to Big Y, Big Y is a retail environment. The parking requirements for the retail environment are much more extreme than they are for a school. We've designed it adequately for a school and the population of the school. We have a three-story building, so the 240,000 square feet that he spoke of is not spread out on one footprint. The only two-story spaces at Big Y are, are the two smaller commercial buildings. So, from a footprint point of view, I haven't done any analysis, but I'll bet you it's pretty close. And I think that's the, all I'd want to say.
Any other questions, Mr. Giuliani?
Yes, the west building is going first, you said?
That's correct.
All right, just roughly, what would, what's that like?
I'm sorry.
How long would that take? 10 months, 14? Do you have an estimate on just...
About 12 to 14 months.
12 to 14 months. It's just a regular work week. We said, I think I heard before, five days a week.
Correct.
Six or seven to three, 3:30-ish.
Correct.
All right, and then the pent, the pent, the penthouses are on the east building, no?
Well, there's one in the middle of the west building, because we have a boiler plant that is going to...
So, that'll be the mechanical floor then, so that would make it the height that you need for all of that. And the same thing for the east building?
In the east building, one of the variances required is because, again, the existing chimney happens to soar above the building, then we're leaving the chimney. The existing gymnasium soars above that line, we're leaving that. The new gymnasium and the new auditorium are additions and request for the variance.
And then, I'm not sure, but I, I think, if I remember right, I was looking at them prints and there is RS4+, there's also LB zones all around this school, so to say that it's just residential isn't really...
No.
Right? Isn't there more like even...
There's LB zones around it.
All the school, yeah.
Sure.
So, it's got residential, it's a mix. It's just like the whole area is a mix.
It's a mixture. You have the car wash next door, which is C.A. zone. You have, you have the other plate, other oil change on the corner, Jiffy Lube. They may even be an LB though, but it is, there is a mixture.
There's a mix. Okay, that's all, Chair, Madam Chair.
If I may, Mr. Per or Mr. Llewellyn, could you just talk very, very quickly to the
Sure, on our, our current timeline, I think we're anticipating putting the first shovel in the ground December, January. That would then trigger the 14-month build-out of the, the new classroom building across the street. After then, we would probably need to then take the next available summer break where we could then, you know, have the students vacate the building and then start doing kind of our summer phasing. And then, that would then lead to a phase that would continue through while they're back in school, because we could then self-contained while we're doing the bulk of the east wing construction. And I think our total actual active construction timeframe is approximately four years for the three phases.
About two, three, four years.
Okay, so we're down to three years. So, that fourth year is the post-warranty period year.
In your opinion, will any of this construction or the staging areas impact the property that is occupied by the car wash?
No. In all of our preliminary discussions, we did look to acquire property to add to the, the footprint of the school to try to address some of these variance issues. We did actually acquire 25 North Parade, and so in getting that corner lot there, that's going to allow us to have the ability of putting a 50-yard football field on the campus. So, conceivably, the sports teams will now be able to practice without having to bus and/or walk over to Pender's. And that, that selection of, of that property helped us in that regard. In a lot of our discussions at the subcommittee level, not to be throwing you under the bus, but some of which you were a part of, I don't think in any of our minds we ever conceived of going to get land from the retail corridor where we expect there was to, you know, be businesses and other entities that, you know, support our tax base and contribute to our tax base. The properties that we buy for this school, just as a means of putting this out there, the, the Board of Ed is a nonprofit, so as we add property to the school, those properties come off the tax roll, whether they be residential, commercial or retail. So, I don't think any of us ever envisioned, you know, let's extend the school's footprint out to Barnum Avenue.
Mr. Per?
I'd like to add one more thing. I was in a meeting with the owner of the car wash and at that meeting, when he was stating all of his concerns, I offered him to make conditions of approval, if you will, some component. So, one of his first concerns, of course, is dust. So, I said, "If you would desire, make it a condition to, for us to put up a 20-foot-high fence, you know, dust fence, not a real permanent fence, while we're doing the excavation." Because the only time I'm going to be really raising dust is while we're doing the excavation. And he sort of poo-pooed that a little bit. So, then he said, "Well, what about after? You know, I'm going to be looking at this building instead of a field." And I said, "Well, the building happens to have no rear. Basically, it's a four-sided, all fronts, if you will." I said, "But again, if desired, we would put up a six or an eight-foot vinyl decorative fence like you do in a residential neighborhood to give your, you know, to keep that view off your property." And again, he sort of accepted, but sort of poo-pooed it. And then, thirdly, he was concerned, as Mr. Knott mentioned, about the condition of approval going onto Barnum Avenue. Once again, we said, "During the construction period, we can make it a condition to allow him to exit onto Barnum Avenue." And none of those were brought up at ZBA for some reason. When I first, when we first met with him, the town and myself, he was there with a different attorney. After that meeting, for some reason, he switched attorneys to Mr. Knott. Not sure why that happened. So, Barry was not at the initial meeting, but this other attorney was. But those are the three conditions that we offered for him to put on the table as part of the condition of approval, and none of that came forward for whatever reasons.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Giuliani?
Mr. Llewellyn might be able to answer this. You would, most likely, most definitely going to have a water truck there for dust control, absolutely, right?
Just as a point of reference, Turner Construction, who's going to be doing the actual work there, an ISO 14,001 company, they're very much affiliated with the Green Building Congress of the United States of America. Their reputation is that they go above and beyond with regards to safety and environment and everything else. Like, they, they look at OSHA regulations as like a baseline. That's not what they strive for, that's what they start at. Their programs, their safety programs, their environmental programs will go above and beyond. They'll have anti-tracking mats for sure. They'll do truck wash-off like you're talking about.
Probably even have a street sweeper going up and down there all day long.
I would, based on what I know of them, I would think at minimal, every other week, there'll be a street sweeper that will probably even get a walk-up pad and...
Let me just interject, so those would be a requirement of the construction. Is that correct?
I, I could pretty much guarantee it. As another sort of caveat to the project, it requires Army Corps of Engineer certified quality control for everything, not just for the construction. Even in the processes and procedures of Turner and of the contractors themselves, they have to meet these kind of higher standards for operations while under construction.
Okay, Mr. Posner?
Mr. Knott? Just for clarification, did you say that there was no outreach to an abutting property?
No, what I said was that our first contact by the town was a letter that my client got from the applicant notifying him of the Board of Zoning Appeals' meeting on July 5th, 2016.
But you did say that there was no outreach to him prior, correct?
Not to him prior to that.
Okay. Now, my question is, what type of business is this that you're representing?
A car wash.
A car wash. What does a car wash do?
Washes cars.
Okay.
They also change oil.
Okay, so now cars are being washed, so I would say Stratford residents are going in there to get their cars washed, we could say?
Yes.
Okay. And they're paying, let's say roughly $20 for a car wash?
I guess, yeah.
Twenty, interior, exterior? Are we, are, is, is there any concern because of the dust and debris and everything going through the air that customers are going to go in and get their car washed during construction and as soon as they come out, they're going to be covered in dust?
Well, that's an issue, but the more important issue is the fact that we are going to be, our customers are going to be entering and exiting the site from King Street, where there's going to be all this congestion and construction activity going on.
Okay. So, is it, is it your opinion that, that customers could leave now unhappy and this could hurt his business from people not visiting the car wash because their cars aren't, they're getting cleaned and then dirty right away again?
I don't think it's that. I think it's, I think it is the fact that the customer is going to find it more difficult to get in and out of the site.
So, it's mainly traffic?
Conveniently, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
The fence, we said, did you say 25-foot fence? 20-foot fence? But, and the building's going to go, what, 62?
Okay, I told you it was 70.
Okay, so 20. And, and can you tell me a little bit about that fence? What is, he said the fence is going to protect against dust? Thank you, Turner Knott.
Yes, because...
What, what is the fence made out of? Like, how does it protect? Can you just explain it to me just a little bit? That'd be great.
Yes, sort of a buildup to, again, because Mr. Knott was not at the initial meeting, that...
meeting, that was his major concern at the time, was dust.
Okay.
So with his major concern being dust, I offered as a contingency to put up a twenty-foot-high fence to mitigate the dust. Um, in talking to Turner, if they're doing excavation, the amount of the dust rising, you know, if it were to rise, that would be enough to mitigate any dust going over property line. So with traffic, at that meeting, traffic never came up. It was always dust.
And it would be mitigated with water and, and it would, before it would even hopefully reach-
Which is required by code.
And, and the fence, nothing can get through the fence, you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay. So it's like a sealed fence?
That's correct. It's like a, uh, an erosion fence.
Okay. And that's gonna go around the entire perimeter of the construction?
No, the idea was to put that along the, um, distance of the property line of his that abuts the high school.
Okay. What about the rest of the properties?
Mm-hmm.
So what about now the rest of the properties? Is there gonna be a, a dust, a, a, I'm sorry, a fence to mitigate the dust for all these other properties?
Again, we don't feel we need the fence at all. This was just an offer to him to satisfy his concern. If it ended up being a concern of the town, I'm sure that we wouldn't, um, mind putting that fence up along further. If we, if there was a complaint for some reason, which I doubt, but if there was, we can always extend the fence.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'd just like to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, um-
I just have a quick, when was the meeting that you met with him? Was that the July fifteenth?
That's correct. It was here in the town hall.
Thank you.
Meeting, they added my line?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of questions, and I'll bring your bag up. This is really to the town attorney. One, does the applicant have an opportunity to reapply and change that original provision so that they could exit and enter off of Barnum Avenue?
When I talked to Mr. Hibansky about it initially, when he's looked at the approval of that, uh, the original zoning approval, he doesn't see any limitation in there. It doesn't mean it doesn't exist. He, when he looked at the file, he didn't see any note to it. Um, so according to his records, there is no limitation on exiting off of King Street unless Mr. Knott's got something we don't have in our file.
Okay. The second question is, since Mr. Knott has presented us with an active legal case in B Z A, how does that affect us?
I think you should make your decision based on your own information and don't, don't, whatever he does in the B Z A is, is separate from us.
Okay. My final question is, Mr. Llewellyn or Mr. Perm, I'm more sort of Mr. Llewellyn. From my own knowledge of this project, it is time-sensitive on a decision. Can you talk to that?
Um, yeah, absolutely. Um, one of the reasons why this project has kind of picked up a significant amount of steam over the last year and a half is because the state has put Stratford High School's charter at risk. Um, and basically, that then dovetails to their accreditation. So if the shovels don't go in the ground and the new building doesn't start, um, making progress, um, we're, it's gonna become an, an issue for us with the state. Um, that's why we got the state legislators involved. It's why we went through special legislation last year in Hartford. Um, despite the particularly brutal economic climate here in Connecticut, our state delegation was able to secure us, um, you know, the total project cost at around a hundred and twenty-five million with a sixty-forty split. The state picking up sixty percent of the costs, um, Stratford picking up forty percent. So, um, you know, that, that's a time-sensitive thing from a land use standpoint. Prior to my really getting involved with the project, there was, I think, two or three rounds of outreach to, you know, town-wide, any commercial property owners, anybody who had a parcel, um, big enough that could be considered for the high school. And everything just brought us back to, you know, the existing site.
If a decision is not made tonight, what is the impact on that schedule?
Um, I may need, um, Rich from Krec to kind of help me out. He's more sort of in tune with the processes, because it's also, our local land use processes here also dovetail into some of the Hartford processes with the Office of School Facilities out there. So, Rich, if you can help me with this.
Hi, Rich Snedeker with Krec. Uh, could you repeat your question, Stephanie? I'm not positive what-
The question is, if a decision is not made tonight, what is the impact on the construction schedule?
Well, uh, currently, we're set to meet with the state tomorrow for our preliminary meeting on the design development phase, uh, and we're hoping to get their blessing to keep moving forward into construction documents. We, we feel like we have everything in place. We have a meeting set for, uh, September twenty-seventh, I believe it is, for, uh, our first phase of construction submission to the state, which would be for the site concrete and steel, which is really the implementing phase of the project to keep everything on track. And, uh, should we miss that date, every month we miss that, there's a cost to the project, an escalation factor that Turner has, has determined based on their, uh, construction experience nationwide, uh, which, you know, for every month we miss, starting from, uh, September, our, our planned completion test, uh, we're gonna have to look at the, however that extends on the back end, we're gonna start taking things away from the school that would benefit the students. So that, that's the best way I can answer that.
Thank you. Is there any other questions?
Is zoning approval required for that date in September?
Zoning approval is required for a number of things for us, uh, and one of those is the Office of State Traffic Authority. We can't go to them without zoning approval.
Okay.
And we can't get the approval for Phase One to go to bid without the Office of State Traffic Authority approval. So everything is the domino, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, everything is domino effect.
Thank you for clarifying.
As I just demonstrated.
Thank you.
Yeah, the September date is critical.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Fuller?
I guess it's more of a point for clarification. Some of the opposing testimony dealt with variances. Uh, variances are not zoning jurisdiction, that's Board of Zoning Appeals jurisdiction. So anything that deals with variances, it, we can't look at it. And B Z A has already rendered a decision. Whether that's appealed or not appealed, B Z A's made that decision, so that takes it outside of zoning's review. There's already been a, uh, as, as you know, as a former B Z A commissioner, um, you're pretty well on it, I know zoning enforcement officer is as well, and, and town legal counsel, so that whole area of testimony, we, it is not even zoning's review.
I'm aware of it, which is the reason why I asked our town attorney whether or not the impact of the B Z A decision would have on us, because most of the testimony was relative to B Z A, is part of that opposition to this application, but it is relative to B Z A. So I think we have gotten that point. Thank you. Is there any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to just close the public hearing on this matter.
Motion by Mr. Posner, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
No.
Item is closed. Thank you very much. Okay, what do we have the next one? I'd like to take just a two-
Take a, uh, make a motion to adjourn?
No, we got work to do. No, but you can have, uh, would you like a two-minute recess?
We don't close the entire public hearing.
Yeah, we have an administrative session following.
We should close the public hearing.
We don't close the public hearing, like-
Motion to close the public hearing, by Mr. Posner, second by Mr. Full- Fuller. All in favor?
Aye. That's what I meant by adjourn.
Sorry. We have a five-minute recess?
Thank you.
Yes, please.
The very first item, and I'd like to take a motion, have a motion, because we're gonna take an item out of order on the agenda, is to discuss James Farm Road just briefly. In doing so, I have to recuse myself, because I have a contractual arrangement to provide service to this applicant, uh, of James Farm Road. So with that, I'm gonna recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Mr. Fuller.
Uh, motion to raise the room to-
Motion to raise the room by Mr. Fuller, second by-
Second.
By Mr. Posner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Fuller will now take the meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Commissioner David Forrester, serving as acting chair for the petition of seven ninety-five James Farm Road. Uh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to take this off the table for discussion purposes.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Do you have a second? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, for the record, we have two commissioners absent who sat on the, um, the hearings for us, Commissioner Forrester, who was a regular member, and Commissioner Peppin. Uh, so for tonight's purposes, or only just for the town attorney to, um, I guess, either give us some information or ask for information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's to ask for information. Uh, I have no information to give you. Uh, on June twenty-ninth, we concluded the public hearing on this matter. What we need, and if you, those commissioners who sat at that public hearing and heard evidence, know that there was a tremendous amount of information that was presented. There were legal arguments made by both sides regarding bankruptcies, regarding potential illegal subdivisions, um, regarding the impact of, uh, of, of a lack of sewers and, and the necessity to, to connect a myriad of legal issues. What I need from you is some direction as to what issues are important to you that you want us to research. Because remember, you have a slowly dwindling amount of time in order to decide this petition. I haven't calculated out the days, but it's probably the end of August, maybe right at the beginning of September. And I understand, uh, from Mr. Hibansky, that you had intended on August ninth to basically devote the administrative session to discussing this. What I don't wanna have happen is that we get here on August ninth and then you start asking us, well, what are the legal ramifications of this? What are the legal ramifications of that? Because we will not have done the research, so it'll be a fruitless venture. So I would like some discussion as to what legal issues this commission would like to have researched prior to that August ninth meeting.
Um, could I go first? I just have a, three quick questions, uh, for, for legal review.
Actually, I, I do need to say something before we go any further with Attorney Florick. Um, Attorney Florick, are you representing the zoning commission?
I am.
Okay. Attorney Florick, are you representing any other board, commission, or body of governance in regard to the matters of seventy, seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
As far as I know, this is the only board that there's anything pending.
How about body of governance in town?
How about what?
Body of governance in town. Are you representing any other bo- any other body of governance in town, including the town council, on matters regarding seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
Well, the town council, i- in, 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 in a sense, yes.
You are representing the town council on matters regarding seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
Um, it depends what, what you call those matters, how you define those matters.
Are you representing the town council in any type, in any manner, in regard to the property at seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
I will say that we discussed that matter in executive session. So from the standpoint that I am one of the town attorneys that represents the town council, as I represent every board and agency in town, and, uh, the town council did discuss it, uh, in, in executive session, I would say that, um, in that sense, yeah, I'm representing the town council too.
Are you representing the town council and the zoning commission on the same matter?
Seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
Well, not, not just the property itself, but on the same, uh, in the same way.
Can't answer that.
You can't answer that. It was executive. Were you part of that executive session?
I was.
Okay. Do you feel you have a conflict of interest now, representing the zoning commission and another client of yours, being the town council?
Not at all.
Not at all? Uh, do you feel that you representing the town council and answering, having to answer our questions as a zoning commissioner, that you would have any bias?
No.
No bias?
None.
Okay. I feel that it's a conflict of interest for you to be representing both the town council and the zoning commission in different matters, in ma- in different, representing both the zoning commission and the town council for different matters regarding the property at seven ninety-five James Farm Road. And I believe that you should not, you were here for all the zoning commission meetings, now you're representing the town council. I feel that we should have a different attorney to ask questions to, because I feel that there could be, uh, everything could be construed as a bias now, which compromises the integrity of the zoning commission.
I don't agree with you, um, but, um, I've been assigned for a long time to seven ninety-five James Farm Road, um, again-
For the zoning commission, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We did have a discussion with the town council. Um, there is nothing, there's no matter pending at this point in time, the town council. We had a discussion, as far as it's gone so far. Uh, so I don't think there's a conflict, and, um-
Were you instructed to negotiate with the developers of seven ninety-five James Farm Road?
I can't answer that. It was an executive session.
It was an executive session, but-
So if, if, um, um, so I, people who engage in discussion in executive session are not supposed to divulge anything that went on in executive session, outside of executive session.
And I never said that anything, I'm asking you questions. I'm asking you to clarify. Uh, I never said that anyone did divulge. What I'm doing is I'm asking you a question. Did, are you in any kind of negotiation with the applicant of James Farm Road and also representing the zoning commission? That's a yes or no question.
I can say that, no, we're not in any kind of negotiation.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question to that too, because something smells rotten in Denmark, to use a Shakespearean line. We have, there is rumor out there that the town is trying to acquire a property that's before the zoning commission. Is that true or false?
I have not engaged in any negotiations whatsoever. Um, I can't help what rumors are out there. I can't help what flies around, those people who use Facebook, cons- who are constantly on Facebook, um, who are spreading these rumors, or who are talking about other people, who are criticizing other people on Facebook. I can't deal with any of that. I can tell you that there are no active negotiations in any way, shape, or form that have, um, begun with respect to any acquisition of seven ninety-five James Farm Road.
Has, have you been instructed to start negotiations by the town council?
Can't answer that. It's an executive session.
I feel it's a conflict of interest, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman. I feel that John Florick should not be answering our questions any further, moving on with James Farm Road.
Um, that's a matter, we don't even have two of the commissioners who are present at the hearing, and I believe that would be appropriate for the whole commission to address, um, who have sat and heard on that particular testimony. I have a question for Attorney Florick as well. Um, how, is it common, or has it ever occurred, that a government agency, a municipal government agency, whether it's a town council, redevelopment agency, whoever, uh, mayor's office, whatever it might be, it would have negotiations with any property, I'm not saying just James Farm Road, but any active property that's before a land use board, that has an open case? Has it happened in the past? Is it, is this something that's?
I, I can't tell you whether or not it's happened. I mean, clearly municipalities have powers of eminent domain. Um, I, I know that, um, I know that there was discussion, at least some discussion, with respect to the Avalon Bay, um, affordable housing petition, as to whether or not the town wanted to possibly acquire that parcel. Not sure how active that discussion ever was. Um, so I guess the answer to your question is, I'm not aware of any specific, um, instances where the town has engaged in negotiations with an applicant, uh, while there was a pending matter. I, I just don't know. It, could it happen? Sure, it could happen. Could the town commence eminent domain? Sure, it could happen. Um, um, but I can't answer, I can't give you definite, I just don't know.
And I'm not just referencing the potential of eminent domain, but in, any sort of, whether it purchases and the, another, the private property owner is allowing, not intimate domain as in, as government powers, but as in pro- as in negotiation- domain as in, as government powers, but as in pro- as in negotiations between a municipal body and a private landowner.
I mean, I, I don't think there's anything that prohibits it, but, um, I'm not aware of any concrete examples where it's actually occurred.
So you, you haven't really, in your time, in the service of the town, you've never really seen that before?
Not that I can recall.
Mr. Chairman, bottom line is Attorney Florick is representing the zoning commission and the town council regarding the same property. It is a conflict of interest, and it definitely now compromises the integrity of the zoning commission. Anything that Mr. Florick says to us, any questions he answers, can be misconstrued as him representing another client and not us.
And that is potential, and that is true, because there's precedent for this, with the 3044 Main Street application. Uh, there was an appeal, there actually were two appeals made by the, um, on that petition. One of them was from the town of Stratford. Attorney Kelly represented the town of Stratford. One of them was from the petitioner, so I imagine Attorney Bellis, or one of his attorneys, um, represented the petitioner.
Correct.
And Attorney Florick represented the zoning commission. This does lead us into a very gray area, and I feel, we, we don't even have two commissioners. I feel that the commission as a whole needs to deliberate on this. It'd be inappropriate right now to render any more testimon- and have any more discussion right now, because we do have this question.
Then, Mr. Chair, then, can I just make a motion? We go back to tabling this until we get our two other commissioners back? I mean...
I'm, I'm not stuck in that.
James Farm has gone on for, I mean, it's taken us up till midnight some nights, uh, and I'm not complaining. I'll stay here till 3:00 in the morning, but I know you don't want to, but I'm just saying, all right? And I don't even want to go down the road that we are not the paid people here, all right? Everybody else is, all right? But I'm not complaining. I'm just letting you know that we let this James Farm Road turn into the biggest, there's a House bill, 5363, up in Hartford, March 1st, that, guess what it was? 830G. Our illustrious paid people up in Hartford, it passed the House. When it went to the Senate, they all just says, "Oh, this is a political hot potato," and they just shot it down and tabled it. And here we are, trying to decide on what to do here, when our paid official, and one of them was here that night. You might remember that guy.
Yeah, I do.
And who are you?
Uh, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to, to put this back on the table. Um...
Uh, Mr. Giuliano made that motion, I think.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll...
And I seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Chair votes aye. Um, I'll get Stephanie.
Nice. Now you just need to stand.
That was quick, Gail.
Wow. Where'd you find it?
It was down the back.
It was the back of mine.
Oh, I didn't even see it. That's why I didn't see it. I thought they, I thought they deleted you.
Oh, we got it.
No.
No, they knew I'd come back.
I don't know why they...
I don't know why they weren't there, but we're gonna do it now.
All right. Um, I have returned Stephanie Phillips from the previous discussions. We're gonna need to add to the agenda tonight's work, um, beginning with the three properties from, let me read this properly, 443 King Street, um, and the 1166 Barnum Avenue. May I have a motion to...
That public hearing is still open.
It's still open, but we should have it added to the agenda.
Oh, added to the agenda?
It should have been on the agenda.
Close the public hearing.
No, not...
No, that one's continued.
Yeah.
Wait.
Oh, oh, oh.
I, I'm a little confused. I thought it is on the agenda.
These three.
It's on my agenda.
It's on mine. The only one that's missing is 45 Parade, North Parade, Stratford High School, four.
The, the Starbucks is on here. It's the Stratford High that's not.
King Street, King Street's on there, Barnum Avenue is on there.
Yeah, just Stratford High's not.
And then the next page is, is the Barnum Avenue, James Farm, and the school's not on here at all, except for...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure we had them all on there.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Okay. So we need a motion for the, Mr. Fuller?
Uh, yeah. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules to add to the administrative agenda, uh, the closed public hearing we conducted tonight, of 45 North Parade and 245 King Street petition of Building Needs Committee seeking approval of special cases required by Section 4.1.6 to construct a new high school in RS4 Zone in LB District.
Second.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Posner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye.
Have it.
Can always be there. Okay. Um, we have, we're starting back to that. Um, the order of the, or really kind of order, the order of the ca- of the agenda, since we've added it, is the beginning of 443 King Street and 1166 Barnum Avenue. Public hearing has not been closed, so it is not tabled. Is there any need for discussion tonight in interest of time? Can we move forward?
Uh, I'd say we just leave it be as it's a continued hearing. There's still more testimony to be gained into record.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna move forward. Following that, with the item that we have just added to the agenda, um, for 443 North Parade, would somebody like to make, take it off the...
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to take, uh, 45 North Parade and 245 King Street petition of Building Needs Committee off the table.
Motion by Mr. Verne, second by Mr. Posner. Yeah, he's got a tack team going on tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, um, I believe this is, we're finally seeing the light at the end of the tunnel of a very, very long process, uh, with, in regards to Stratford High School. There's been a, a long history in this town where there is a perception, whether true or otherwise, um, perceived, that one high school is played favorites over the other, and I cannot attest to the past of 30 years ago, or 20 years ago. But here's the town, in a very bipartisan and very community-driven effort, to give Stratford High its just due. And I see this as a Bonnell alumni, but I represent a district, and I know it's Commissioner Posner represents a district, where we have students that go to both high schools. Um, we have to look out for both schools. A quality education is not the school you go to. E- every school in this town should be quality education, and this town is making great strides in doing that. In regards to the zoning petition before us, the, of North Parade and King Street, uh, this is, uh, meticulous. The, uh, I, I can't commend the Building Needs Committee and Stratford High Subcommittee enough, uh, with, uh, Mr. Llewellyn, uh, Mr. Petrosely, Ms. Phillips, and many other members who sat on that, to, um, the due diligence that they put in, as well as the BZA, as well as the town council, Board of Education, and other commissions. This is the town at work. This is the votes that, many years down the road, you will be most proud of when you take these votes. Um, this is what moves our town forward. The benefits of this application is profound. Quality education for, for generations to come, enhanced property values. What brings people to town? Quality schools. Whether it's businesses or residential, quality schools bring people to town. This alleviates some of the flooding and, uh, storm drainage issues, as enumerated in the reports. This alleviates a significant parking issue of students who have to go on King Street, which is a pretty dangerous road sometimes, Nichols Ave, which can be a pretty dangerous road for foot traffic. This does that. This is a state-of-the-art school that also pays homage to its history. It keeps the facade, enhances it, and it also makes it a state-of-the-art facility where even maybe some Bonnell students would be envious that they're not in. And here's, um, here's an example of the town doing something profoundly positive, and I think that we should approve this situation. Uh, with maybe just one minor stipulation, should dust fencing be required on any of the perimeters, that the flexibility is there to provide that?
Mr. Fuller? May I have the honors, being my district?
Mr. Posner, please add to it.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve 45 North Parade and 245 King Street petition of the Building Needs Committee seeking approval of a special case as required by 4.1.6.1 to construct a new high school in RS4 and LB District, with the friendly amendment of, uh, of the fencing, uh, that said the 20-foot fencing that would protect the surrounding property of the car wash, uh, from dust and particles.
Uh, I'd probably second that motion.
I'd like to make, before we finalize a vote on that, I'd like to make, uh, first, I'd like to add, would you like to make another, a comment? Mr. Baker, would you like to add to a comment? I'd like to make one comment. I've been working on this project along with Mr. Fuller, and Mr. Llewellyn, and a number of people in this, for those five years and almost the entire time that I served in the town council. I am extremely proud to be able to be here today, to see this move forward. It has been one of my prime goals, is to see the education in this town move forward, and moving Stratford High forward is a major leap forward. I do want to answer something in sort of a jokingly matter to Mr. Rancunis, with the Mason Dixon line, "The war is over. I like to think that Stratford is all one community," and that this is not just a reflection of one side or another side. This is the entire community. That mass head that I think Mr. Llewellyn and a couple of people talked about, is gonna be filled with names from both parties, from both sides of town, all working together. It is probably our most significant achievement of a community working together, and I think everybody who has been involved in it should feel very proud, including the members of this commission. We all have a hand in it. So, with that, I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion patches, congratulations. This is historic day. Thank you.
Remember, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Rancunis shows up to every meeting.
I think we're gonna name, I hope we name at least one room after him. Okay, I'd like to move forward with the approval of the minutes of July 12, 2016. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve, second by Ms. Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
All in, anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 164 Hamilton Avenue, is the review of the final plans. I believe everybody received a copy of it so far.
Yep.
May I have a, a motion to at least begin discussion?
Motion to take off the table, 164 Hamilton Ave.
Motion to take off the table, second by Mr. Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. No one's opposed. Discussion. We had several conditions that were noted in there. Uh, is Mr. Knott available?
Yeah.
Mr. Knott? May I have a, uh, motion to waive the rules to allow Attorney Knott to address the...
A motion to waive the rules to allow Attorney Knott to speak on behalf of this, uh, application?
Second by Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Knott, could you begin quickly by reviewing the changes and the stipulations and how they were addressed in the plans?
Yes. The stipulations that were included in the approval were, uh, at, uh, Scott's request that the driveway... The driveway...
Get late.
The dive, the driveway entrance, uh, be measured as far as width is concerned. Also, that the distance between the units, uh, be measured to the parking spaces across, uh, the driveway from the units, as well as the distance between the units. And if you look at the revised site plan that was submitted as our final plans, all of those measurements are shown on the final plans. Secondly, it was suggested that, uh, snow will be removed from the premises during snow remediation, and there's a note on the plan to the effect that during certain storm events, uh, snow will be removed from the premises. And, and the reason why we qualified it with certain snow, snow events, is because if you recall, we had included a oversized, uh, water detention, uh, facility as part of our plan that is able to handle, uh, up to eight inches of rain in a 24-hour period of time. So, in the event that we exceed that, then the snow will be removed from the premises. Finally, you wanted, you, you recommended, uh, the installation of a play area. Now, what we did, uh, there, instead of putting a play area behind units nine and 10, which had been talked about at the last meeting, we have included so-called limited common areas behind each unit. And you can see there's a note where it points out a backyard behind each unit called the limited common area, and that way, a person's play, uh, swing set, or swimming pool, or whatever, can be put in that limited common area that applicable to each of, each of the houses. And then finally, uh, we're, we, we are planning on installing a stockade fence around the perimeter. There was discussion whether it should be vinyl stockade. My clients have decided on a stockade fence, and that is indicated on the plans. So I believe that these plans conform in all respects to the stips that were included in the approval, and I would ask that you approve them.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just a, a couple of quick clarification questions. Um, the walkways, I know that was something I had suggested.
Oh, yeah, they're there also. You're right. I'm sorry.
I see them. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that, for safety of...
And we also put front stoops on.
Um, yep, I see that, front stoops that go right to the walkways.
Yep.
Can, are the walkways, are they like, three-feet sidewalks?
Three feet, yeah.
Okay, great. And, um, there's a walkway, is that, is that, okay, in front of Unit 5, I see it steps off onto the right corner there. It steps off onto the walkway.
Yeah.
Right, Unit 5, okay?
Yeah, the corner of the front stoop steps onto the walk.
Steps onto the walkway, but there's no walkway between Unit 1, 2, and...
Yeah, it is kinda strange.
Uh, I'm sorry, Unit 1, I'm, I'm, yeah, those are the, I'm sorry, those are the parking spots.
Yeah.
So is the first unit that's facing Hamilton, then there's a second unit. I guess it says number 5 for the garage.
Right.
Okay, the parking spot. Is there a walkway that goes...
If you look next to the parking space number 3?
Yeah.
That comes out of the side of that Hamilton Avenue?
Okay.
There's a little walkway there.
And that goes right to the parking spots right there?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, I think the wa- walkways look good. Um, there's, in front of the walkway, next to the stoop, is that grassy area?
Yes, it is.
It is? So they have a little front yard?
Yeah, they do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, those were good suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was one of my major concerns, and, and please thank Mr. Lanza for addressing that.
Well, that, those were, I gotta tell you, you know, this is actually a time where the process, the back-and-forth process really worked well, and I appreciate your, your dialogue with us.
Just curious, I know, um, public, uh, input was always a very important key of this, uh, revised plans and, uh, submissions for proposed settlements. Um, what sort of outreach for this particular eight-unit site plan has been made?
Well, prior to our last meeting, I had met with Wally Kadim, the councilman from that district, and had given him a copy, uh, of the plan that you looked at at the last meeting, and he was gonna take it to his constituents. I made, I offered to make myself available to meet with him. He, uh, what, he did not take me up on that. I called him two or three times after meeting with him to see if any of the neighbors wanted to meet, and I did not hear from him. I understand that he also got a copy of the plan that you're looking at right now, uh, from, uh, a, a, a third party, and, uh, that he was asked to provide input with respect to this plan. I don't think there was any.
And I also remember at the previous zoning meeting that, um, you and him also made, uh, you and Councilor Kadim also made comments in record that there would be some sort of communication back and forth as well. So, I'm pleased to hear that you initiated that. Whether people take you up on that or not, you really can't control over in the outreach that you made.
That's true.
Um, I also appreciate, uh, the sidewalks and the stoops, too. I just, it, it, one, from an aesthetic standpoint, I think it's a little more appealing, but two, for the more important part is the safety standpoint that people...
I agree with you 100%. I agree with that 100%. Thank you.
And the sidewalks that I see outside of the property line along, uh, Hamilton, that will be put in by the applicant as well, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Mr. Knott, just for, for public records, just in case anybody was, was curious, I'd like to have a lot of... like to have a lot of, I like to use also the government, when I sit in a position of a public official, to educate the public too on process. I think that's one of the responsibilities we have when we take an oath of office, is should the commission approve this settlement? Can you explain a little bit what the process is that you and a member of the town would then, a legal counsel from the town would then go back to, I presume Judge Bellis or another?
Yeah. But town council and I went to, were called in by Judge Bellis to discuss the two cases that are pending relating to this property. And Bellis talked to us, and after looking at the plans and discussing the issues, she suggested that we come back in with an eight-unit single-family project instead of the 10-units before which had two duplexes. I talked to my guy, he said that that was agreeable to him. We went to Jay, Jay told us we couldn't do it because Section 5.3 had the 10-unit minimum, so I filed the zone text amendment, which was approved two weeks ago, and at that time you approved the settlement that Judge Bellis had recommended. Now, subject to the final plans being approved tonight, which incorporated these issues that I just discussed. Now, the next step is that we got to go back to Bellis. I have to show her that we've had a public meeting of the zoning commission, that the item was identified properly on the agenda. I had, I had discussed the proper language for the agenda with Brian Lima, the town attorney who's handling this file. We provided that language to Jay prior to last month's meeting. He incorporated the correct language onto the agenda, and when we go back to court, we have to get the judge's permission to withdraw the case, the two cases. So now that this has been taken care of, we're going to notify Judge Bellis's clerk, and we'll go down there and have her approve the settlement.
Just a quick question for you. You mentioned that you need to show the judge that it was a public meeting on this plan. The only public hearing or meeting we had was for the text amendment, was not to discuss and approve, approve this. That was done in our administrative session. Did that have to also be public too, according to the judge?
An administrative session is a public meeting, as far as that statute is concerned.
But the public isn't able to give any kind of?
It doesn't have to be a public hearing. It only has to be a meeting open to the public.
I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, great, thank you.
No, that, we satisfied it. Thank you very much.
If I could just ask clarification to that as well. A public meeting is any meeting of a quorum of an elected board, or an appointed board in some cases. With its minutes, there's an agenda, there's proper notification. A public hearing, depending on what it is, is required by law or done so at the pleasure of the commission, or committee, or whatever it might be. So this is a public meeting, and I'd also say we did have a public hearing on it, which is why there were two appeals before. We had two different public hearings on ultimately rejected or denied site plans. So that's also part of the whole public hearing process too, is the previous, well, the, I guess the site plans that were under appeal. Attorney Knott, just for additional, just public education, if we will, should the commission approve the final site plan? And should the judge approve the settlement? And thus the other two appeals are effectively withdrawn? Does that make the known void that it's the eight units that's going there, not the 10 units?
Exactly. That's the only thing that can go there, is the eight units that you've got in front of you right now. That's what we must build.
Okay. I'm pretty.
I'm satisfied with that. Is there any other further questions?
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the final site plan for 160.
Motion by Mr. Posner. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fuller?
Madam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Chair agrees. Thank you. Thank you. All right. As far as the rest of the agenda, from the time that we have left before 11 o'clock, I am recommending that we suspend the remainder of the agenda to our administrative session on Tuesday, unless anybody opposes. And also on the agenda for August 9th, we are going to carry over the application for King and the Merrill property. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We're continuing that public hearing for that property. That means, are we continuing that to a special hearing, or are we going to continue it to our next one at the end of August?
No, it'll have to be a special hearing prior to our administrative session on April 9th.
So we're?
Oh, August 9th.
So within the next week and a half?
Within the next week and a half.
Okay.
And within that timeframe, we are expecting the applicant to come back with the information that you've requested, which includes, and let's just make sure we have a clear notation of that, what's expected.
I'm not sure if a legal notice is going to be required for this special meeting to be posted in a newspaper.
Yeah.
And I'm only saying Jay is out and Tiny's out for another week and a half, so to actually, if I need a legal notice in the paper, that's not going to be even possible.
That's not going to be even possible.
So they didn't seem to have a problem by putting it off until?
To the 30th?
For a month, until which date?
Until the last Tuesday in August?
August 30th.
Right, correct. That's what I would assume, because.
That's what I assumed we were doing, that's why I was, I was just going to ask about the August 9th date.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question too. Since it's a continued hearing, my understanding is that the level of notifications isn't, the burden to notify isn't quite as strict as if it's a hearing for the first time too. I don't know if a legal counsel could answer to that or not.
I believe it's less strict, but I don't, in front of me, have the exact information. I probably could get that for you and report back the next day or so, if that would be helpful.
It might be just safe to have it during a regular.
It might be helpful. If we could, if you can get an answer to John about the legal notices.
Yep.
Preferably, I'd like to do it on August 9th to get it done, but there is a second reason. I will not be attending the August 30th meeting, and therefore whoever replaces me to make that decision would have to listen to the tapes. So for expediency, if I'm here on the 9th and we can handle it, that would be much better.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
So you're going to give me information whether a legal notice is required for the 9th?
Yes.
And hopefully it's not.
I'm hoping that's what it's going to say, but I got to look, I don't have it in front of me, I'll have to look.
I don't know if we'll have the technical time to even get it in if it's required.
Right. We'll have to answer tomorrow.
We'll see, and we can let everyone know. The other thing is, are we clear about what's expected from the applicant?
Well, I think Scott wanted, for the traffic accidents, you wanted our police department to research the last five years.
Yes.
And we asked the applicant to come back with their model for?
We wanted some counts as to whether their corporate office had some actual, what they feel was?
Would be the modeling for the drive-through.
The number of cars through their drive-through.
Gail, do you have all that in your notes?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have that. Is there anything else that we expect them to come back with? We're good? All right. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?